Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our November 5, 2020 Roundtable.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November 5, 2020 Roundtable. Here in the room, we have Commissioners Willie, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Treese, and myself, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Scouton is absent.
Yeah, he's joining Zoom, Madam Chair.
Oh, well, hello, Commissioner Scouton by way of Zoom. Can you show yourself so we know if you're actively there you go in the conversation? I see your chin.
We see your nose and your mouth.
Oh, that's, I learned that. That's the, by virtue of the tablet, too.
Yeah, there he is.
My sister gave me a mini pad, and I have found that. So I would ask, since this is a roundtable, which is very conversational, that we're able to have you on screen. So before we kick off on the agenda topics, I just want to point out that we have a new staff member here onboard. Brenda, if you could just wave. Brenda just joined the team this week to support our CAO, Tanya Angie. So a new face on the scene. As that support transitions from Kathy Jacoby, as later this week she transitions over to her new career in her work with Clean Water Services. So she's leaving us in good stead. Alrighty. So today we have, we have, it's November, so this is the time of year where we take stock of all that we've accomplished here in 2020, and it has been quite a lot, as well as start to get oriented for a new year, 2021 and beyond. But we also have a new project, and our General Counsel, Alan Raplié, will be showing us all how to have an active retirement, and we wish him well. He has had a great tenure here at Washington County. So our first topic of today will be how we're going to go about going through a search for county council and job description and all that wonderful stuff. So per your agreement, we have brought in expert resources to help us with this. But I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Mazzara Myers, who is serving as our project manager for this. So all of the, we've got some new information that wasn't in the packet you had published, but it's at your table, and this is new to all of us. So take it away, please.
Great, thank you, Chair Harrington, members of the board. Elizabeth Mazzara Myers, here today as your project manager for the recruitment for county council. Next slide. So I just want to start by saying that what our plan is to do in these couple of slides is just to provide some groundwork for you on some basics information about what this recruitment, about the recruitment, in an effort to allow you all to have a conversation about the recruitment. So I want to introduce the team that brought this together. We have Latricia Tillman, our Chief Equity and Information Officer, Heather Gantz from Novak Consulting, and Eva Labonte, who is the human, oh, Eva, I apologize, I did not update.
It's totally fine.
Who's the chief HR.
I'm here in my role as Chief HR Officer.
Pardon me. I didn't get that updated. So today, in just a few minutes, to begin your conversation, Ms. Tillman will talk about the equity considerations to keep in mind as we move through this recruitment. We'll talk about the timeline, some considerations of what's already on your schedule. You'll all have a conversation about who should be involved. We have some ideas about that, where it should be posted. You'll have our first look at the job description. We'll tell you where it came from and kind of get you moving on that, and then let you have a conversation about interim. So that's my intro. I'm going to ask you to turn the slide. There's our team, and then one more time. Great, and I'll turn it over to our Chief Equity Officer.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and members of the board, and thank you, Elizabeth. My name is Latricia Tillman, Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. So Elizabeth asked me to talk about three things briefly around equity considerations for this recruitment. One, the legal considerations. Two, how do we create an equitable hiring process? And then third, how do we know that we got it right? So in terms of the legal considerations, we would want to look to Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. So on Tuesday, remember, I talked about just the way that we're framing up the initial work of this office around making sure that we're compliant with the Civil Rights Act, and that really sets a floor for us. That is not the ceiling. But affirmative action and equal employment opportunity kind of help paint the way for embedding diversity and inclusion best practices that can help us establish equitable hiring processes. And one thing we know is that when, in most organizations, the majority of the diversity tends to be at the frontline level. And when you start to get up into management positions and executive positions, there tends to be less diversity. So this position, this recruitment creates an opportunity to really do some intentional work around diversity and inclusion hiring at the executive level. So how would we create an equitable hiring process? There's quite a lot of pre-work that needs to happen. One is to clarify how equity is an essential part of county council knowledge, skills, and ability. We need to ensure diversity in job posting sites. Not just where we put the postings out, but also when we're going through the interview process, that the interview panels are diverse, that the interview questions are thoughtful around equity, diversity, civil rights, and that there's, we're looking at both a mix of skill and experience, that there is, a successful candidate would have some history of success in the area of equity, diversity, and inclusion. There's also a need to control for bias, both in pre-screening. So when we're looking at how do we engage subject matter experts to review the skills and qualifications of candidates, that they're controlling for their bias, as well as in the interview process. And then I would encourage that we consider partnering with a recruiter who specializes in both legal recruitment and diversity recruitment. So I would think that that's, you know, a specialized area, and we'll talk a little bit more about some of the opportunities to target our recruitment. How do we know we got this right? So I think the essential consideration for this recruitment is that as a board, as a county, we establish and reinforce the message, both internally and externally, that Washington County is serious about equity, diversity, and inclusion. And that means that we are intentional in our recruitments at every level to implement diversity recruitment best practices, and that we don't unilaterally or automatically create exemptions for certain positions. So especially when we're hiring executive level positions, the diversity recruitment effort needs to be top-notch. In terms of other elements of getting it right would mean that we have diversity of a highly qualified applicant pool throughout the process, so that we don't just see diversity in the applicants, but not when we get to the interviews. So there's diversity all the way through the process, that we do have diversity on the interview panels, and that's both internal staff representation as well as community representation, and that equity would be part of the skill set of the successful candidate. So that's just beginning. Happy to answer any questions at whatever point you're taking questions.
Will you be helping us ensure that we have various building blocks in place during the process? Can we count on?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And part of it is because of the importance of this role, obviously, but I think the other piece is that we don't want to be starting from scratch with every recruitment. We need to start building, as you said, laying a foundation of building blocks that we use for every recruitment. We know that there are several other ones that are coming forward in the near future. So this helps us establish that foundation and communicate a consistent message.
Okay.
And I envision partnering with Latricia through the process. She would be a strong partner through the recruitment process.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you for that introduction.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this point?
I have a question, and I'd like to know, we didn't have a Chief Equity Officer in place when we hired our administrator. Do we, are we looking at a lessons learned process as well? Are there places where we could have done things differently and just use that as an opportunity to improve on this hire?
We could do that today.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, if I may.
Of course.
Excuse me. It seems like we've got a lot of work to do to communicate a message that we are walking our talk. And this position would seem to me to be fairly specific in that an expertise, obviously, significant amount of expertise and things is going to be required. So I guess I don't have an answer to this. I just know that, I feel really strongly that our messaging has got to be strong as well. And I realize we have to walk the talk, like I said. But just getting the word out there so we have not only a pool of candidates for this position, but future positions where people look to us and say, "That's where we want to go. We believe what they're doing." I don't know how we do that. I guess I'm going to say, "That's your job," but it's also our job. And so I look forward to you training me how I can do a better job of communicating that. Okay?
I appreciate that invitation. Thank you.
Okay, great. So if we could, the next two slides are just some calendar considerations. So as you think about the conversation you're going to have today, and we'll continue through the negotiating of the contract, I just want us to think about what's ahead of us. So today is the 5th of November. We've got two commissioners that are taking their well-deserved vacations, as well as Thanksgiving. Oh, three, three Thanksgiving weeks slash.
I'm taking the week of Thanksgiving off, in case you don't know.
Well, and I want to say that it's marked on my calendar out, but it also says slash available upon request. So I'm here, but I'm not going to, you know, if you need me, I'm here.
Let's help you check out.
Commissioner Treese, what are those dates? Do you have them on top of your?
It's just the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you.
The 23rd through the 27th.
Yeah, and this is Commissioner Scouton. I would just add that if there's really, if there's some urgency involved, I certainly would be happy to take a phone call or a teleconference from where I'm vacationing. Because at this point, I do anticipate attending the two board meetings during that time period in November 6th to the 21st. I'm going to, I mean, I want it just to be vacation, so I'm going to try to minimize. You know, otherwise it's just a working vacation, and I don't want it to be a working vacation. I want it to be a vacation. But I do plan to come and attend the two board meetings. And if something critical with respect to the legal counsel, then I'd like to, I'd like to be available for that. I recognize this is a very important job, and without being too pushy about it, I also, I'd like to say that I think I bring some expertise into this area. I practice in this area of law. I know something about government law practice and what it's like to work in this area as a lawyer. So I'd certainly like to be, I'd like to be in loop, and I don't want my vacation time to be a problem. Thank you.
Well, unlike my colleagues, when I go on vacation, I go on vacation. And I will never be advertising that I'm available.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioner Scouton.
I was last to put that on my calendar, so I felt obligated to make sure that I gave you all the option as well. So my tardiness was part of my decision there.
Well, just one other thought. I really appreciate the comment the chair made, and I really agree with her on that. I think we have tended in recent years to not really provide that kind of clean, sort of hygienic break between work and play. But this is an important position. And number two, I also recognize that I'm going to be, I'm going to be on vacation, as it were, going forward into the new year. And I don't want to end my last month or two here on the board in a place where, you know, I'm not making my contributions where I can before I leave. So I kind of feel like I'm in a special circumstance as well.
Okay, thank you. I will note that I did not add that you have a December roundtable open to you if you wanted to add conversation there, as well as December 8th and 15th, our board meetings and work session. December 21 through January 1, I count as winter holidays as our CAO is out. I don't know that you all feel like you must have her here for those conversations, but I want to highlight that. And then next slide. And then here's the others, here's some recruitment considerations. So now that we've sort of grounded that we've got some big holidays coming up and lots of vacations, we now today, for the first time, you're going to see a job description. We'll talk about that in a minute, but this is first view at it. So from today, we're going to add two or three weeks. You will need to declare a vacancy for this, so that could be December 8th or 15th. And then the job goes up for posting. I would note that if you do declare the vacancy and announce the job posting on the 8th or 15th of December, that you are then posting during a winter holiday.
Don't count those two weeks.
And so we may not be counting those two weeks exactly, thank you. The pre-screening of candidates that Novak does on the back end of that, and then, of course, the interview process. So if we put that all together, starting today, we're looking at, I believe it's around March, before we get to some kind of negotiation. Again, we can talk about that more, but just want to set out that timeframe for you.
And I'll just make a couple of comments. Remember, this is a roundtable, so much more informal conversation, so do feel free to jump in. I am on the search committee for the Washington County Visitors Association CEO President Search, and so part of that process will be landing on this as well. But that's on me to make sure that I do that. And unlike some of you who are speed readers, I am most definitely not a speed reader. So hopefully, I won't bog the conversation down as I'm trying to read and participate on the job description.
Right.
But I don't know if I've ever been upfront with you all about that, that I'm not real good at that. It's one of my weaknesses.
And I will note that, of course, you know you have a new board member joining you as Commissioner Scouton retires, and whether that figures into this conversation or not is for you, I suppose, to take and move forward with.
Well, it's funny, I just, I think you anticipated my comment. I mean, I'm very mindful of the fact that we now have a county commissioner-elect, and she should certainly have her fullest opportunity to participate and be a player in this important decision. And I certainly don't want to be stepping on her options and opportunities as well. She and the rest of them are going to have to live with the consequences, which I'm sure will be positive. So I'm not unmindful of that as well.
Great, so next slide, please. So I think I want to just pause here and let Heather and Latricia, myself, and Eva if needed, join the conversation. But I think one of the things you need to have a conversation about is who should be a part of this process. So as we start looking at a timeframe and say, if we launch today and you finish in March, who do you want in the process, and where do you want them in the process? And we can pose that conversation now and leave it for conversation, or pose the question and leave it for conversation, or we can pause here and let you start having that conversation. Oh, great. So let's let that stand and just move through the last few slides.
Does that mean we're going to come back to, this is very important.
Yeah, well, it's up to you. I mean, I think we only have a few more slides. It's up to you if you feel like this is a good time for that, or if you want to just move through and have the conversation after, so up to you.
Why don't we go through all the material and keep going? Definitely come back to this, but also come back to the lessons learned aspect, too.
Thank you.
Eva?
Are we talking about the posting now, the next slide? Thank you. So we put together for your consideration a list of places that we would advocate to post this position. These are sites, for the most part, that do help us with our diversity and inclusion efforts. These are Oregon-based locations and work groups and organizations that can help us advocate for a diverse pool of candidates. So these are suggestions for you and the Novak company as places to post, as well as, you know, other ideas that the Novak company would have. We just thought it was important to bring this list up that are specific to attorneys in Oregon and also that have a diversity lens.
So I, Metro just last year went through a recruitment, and I don't know what kind of list they used, or what's to be gleaned there. But what the heck, why not ask?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I would also ask, these are all Oregon-based, except for the, perhaps, the Northwest Indian Bar Association and the South Asian Bar Association. It doesn't, I think we need to be looking at all of Southwest Washington and California as well. So the others, I know this is a national search, but these are targeted organizations. And I would like to see, because so many of our attorneys are, have passed the bar in adjacent states as well.
And I guess I would note that this is the "and" not the "or." So this is all those other places and these. And Novak will, I think, be working with Eva to make sure that's a complete list.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Scouton. Certainly, the other obvious sites would be some of the appropriate associations of county councils and city attorneys and municipal lawyers. That, I mean, those kinds of government law practice bar sections and things like that. I mean, it's not listed. Those are not specifically, you know, oriented towards diversity, but those are also pretty obvious places. Because I have to say that I would be, I would have some discomfort if the person that we ultimately were to hire, you know, if they don't have the Oregon, if they don't have Oregon Bar membership, I don't think that's necessarily a fatal blow, but I would have some concerns about that, frankly. And I think that someone having government law practice is also something that I think is, something that would be concerning to me if I didn't see that in the resumes.
Yes, this list was meant to be the focus on diversity and inclusion in our recruitment, not an inclusive list.
We could certainly put an inclusive list together collectively to ensure that we are not missing any aspect of it, whether it be city attorneys, municipal attorneys, county councils, in addition to the diversity and other locations as well.
I think that's what you're hearing, is that some members of the commission do want to see that. So why not consider that as part of a subsequent package for us?
Great.
And I assume that the files that you've given us in hard copy here, that Commissioner Scouton has those electronically?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay, so next slide, and I'm going to turn this over to Heather. We're just going to reference the job description. We're not going to review it, per se, but just give you some background.
Thank you, Elizabeth. The document that you have in front of you is taken from three different documents. Want to be able to give you a little bit of history and then let you know what we're looking for, what I'm looking for from you all as we move forward. So the base point of this document is from the 2011 Washington County job description. So a bit outdated. We want to be able to review that for accuracy, additions, things that are missing. We also pulled the Multnomah and Clackamas County job specifications and have included some additional information to add value to, to give you a good draft and a good amount of information to which you can articulate what's important, things that are standing out to you, things that may be missing, and/or things that just are not as relevant, but still want to be able to give you a broad perspective and a diverse perspective. What we would then do after seeking input is work with Latricia to ensure that we have the equitable lens placed in the job description.
So I have a question on this, and Alan, you may be able to help me see it in the job description. So we have multiple, and I'm not sure if from, Clean Water Services is its own municipal utility as a service district. So there are service districts and there are special districts. And you and your staff take care of all the legal end for that. So I want to make sure that any legal particulars, both under essential job duties, as well as, you know, knowledge, skills, and abilities, that that aspect of special district and service district handling is somehow in there. I don't know at what point TVID hired Clark Balfour as their full-time legal counsel. So if there's some recent job posting there or not, for example. But that's just one thing that popped into my head when you were talking about sources.
I'm sure I just got this this morning, so I'll look at all of them.
Yeah, we all did, so you're all fine.
I'll get back to any comments.
This is by no means meant to be even close to.
No, this is our kickoff.
Yep, yep.
This is our kickoff for everybody, so.
We were merely using the pieces and tools that we had at our disposal as a good starting point for great conversation. So this is exactly what we're looking for.
Yep. And I will say, I did reach out to AOC to see if they had any templates or anything like that. They didn't have anything on hand, and suggested I reach out to other counties, which I'm happy to do if you feel like that's the direction you want to go. I do want to note that third bullet point is a thing to be done, not a thing that has been done. So I apologize. As I look at it, it looks as though we've already sought that input, and we haven't. After we get direction from the board, we'll continue that, so.
This is Commissioner Scouton. I, you know, I guess my, there's just so much to read sometimes, so much to keep up with, and we got the background of this election. But I do note, and I'm pleased to see, that under the qualifications and under the job description, it speaks of membership in the Oregon State Bar and years of experience, including an emphasis on government law. So I'm glad to see that in the draft qualification statement. Thank you.
And I would add that, I would ask that we are in the very end stages of adding as the fifth essential job duty for every position at the county, our diversity, equity, and inclusion statement, and I would ask that we add that to this as well.
I was just noting that I didn't see anything to that effect, so. But I trust that we're early.
Yes.
Okay, so next slide, please. So again, here's where I ask some questions that we can just review for now and come back to. What are the additional sources you'd like us to look at? Would you like to meet one-on-one with Novak, with Heather, or Latricia, or Eva, or three, or two's?
I think that's a really good idea. I think we should, all of us, including Alan, so all six of us, have the opportunity of going through that interview with this information. Because I think that what we found through the CAO, I believe that was part of our CAO process, and I think that investment on the front end helped us with an efficient process for more of the back end.
And just for clarity, what you're talking about is an interview process for each one of us about what we think the special needs and requirements of this position are. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then we can figure out as part of this discussion today before we close, so what are the next steps? So that you can help out, frame, help, help frame out how we then, after those interviews, you're able to pull us all back to, okay, here's what you've got, the essence of that.
Yes, correct. Common themes, consistency will come out of those conversations. In addition to Elizabeth's slide a couple ago about are there other resources that we want to engage in those conversations with as well, internally and/or externally?
And I think, too, drawing from those conversations will be not just the job description on paper, but the qualities you're looking for, right? And so I think there's both of those things that will come together. And then, of course, the final piece for you to talk about is what else you need for us to ensure the description fits your needs as a board.
Because I know for myself, I stepped back one day and just banged out some notes out of my head. I have certain expectations and desires around policy development, about management, about collaboration and communication, so.
Thank you.
And they may already be here, for all I know, so we'll find out.
I have a follow-up question, Commissioner Scouton, here. Just wondering what role of any Alan Rapley played in putting this together.
So the sources of this--
Who's really--
Sorry, the sources of this were the 2011 job description from Washington County, as well as recent class specs, I would say, with a poll from Multnomah County and Clackamas County.
So it's just a starting point, and as described, he's going to be one of the folks interviewed, is part of that six for the next steps.
I'm sorry, who's one of the six? What's--
Alan.
Frankly.
Alan is. So each commissioner plus Alan.
Alan. Oh, in terms of the interview panel?
Yes. For--
No, 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 no. In terms of determining, Dick, what the job description's going to look like. So Heather is going to interview each one of us, including Alan, about what we think are important features.
Okay. Well, that was my question, actually, so thanks. Yeah.
Great, so that, next slide, and I'm going to just slightly turn the tables here a bit on the conversation and say the other question you'll have to consider is hiring an interim, and I know both Eva and Heather have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I do. So I wanted just to, just offer a suggestion that I think we should be thoughtful about, I think we need an interim, that's my thought, but I think we should be thoughtful about placing someone in that role who is an active candidate for the role as well. It does cause some concern for candidates. So we have seen in recent high-level recruitments, we get the question on a fairly regular basis, is there an interim? Are they, and they actually ask if they're a candidate for the position. It can be a detriment to people wanting to apply, simply because they may think, right or wrong, that that person has an edge or an in or-- And so I just think, not that we shouldn't do it, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that what we have seen in the Human Resources Division over the last year or so is that is a concern from candidates. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
And would you remind me again the time gap between Alan's departure and our projected hire? I think we're talking about March?
I think that's right.
And Alan?
I think we're looking at January, February, and March, but I would like to note that having gone through 2020, where we thought we would have an interim CAO for just a few months, we certainly could never know what's ahead, so.
No, I understand. I was just trying to--
Yeah. Three months is-- The plan is three months.
And I would also throw out, just as consideration, there are other alternatives for things like a higher-class pay assignment for someone who is not officially, who could be supervisor but not officially named as an interim. Those are things to consider. I just wanted to make you aware that those are options as well.
And those would be internal, right?
They could easily be, yes, they would be internal. So I just wanted, I just wanted to make you aware of things that we have seen trending in HR.
And I do think that's a topic of conversation, is there someone internally within the organization that could step up into that capacity during that duration, or, and/or are you interested in finding an external resource to truly step in into the interim capacity while we do the full-time recruitment? Those are things that I would love to have a conversation with about today.
And I'd like to hear Alan's comments on this, too.
Commissioner Threes, I think we have a really good pool of internal candidates. We have a lot of excellent experience in our office. I think we'll see which ones are interested in, you know, trying to get it full-time, and then who would be interested in internal, and I'll direct those inquiries to Elizabeth.
So I think I'm hearing you say that there should be somebody in a lead position for the time that you're gone.
I agree. I think there should be someone who could act as one person, and she goes by.
Thank you.
Yep. I certainly don't want to be left without there being an interim. I do want to make sure that our internal candidates have the best opportunity to pursue this career opportunity. And I hadn't thought about hiring an external interim, quite frankly, to ensure that that is available. I did look at the publicly available resources to try and figure out who's on your team. Is there someone? Part of what I'm struggling with a little bit is, one day we had a phone call, and you told me about who is available in your department to retire, and that it made it sound like that was pending, and then a couple weeks later, you were like, oh, no, they're not going anywhere. So, and so in between those times, I was like on this roller coaster of possibilities. And so what I'm wondering about is, are there capable senior-level attorneys on your team who don't want to pursue this job opportunity that we could provide the interim opportunity to, in order to make sure that there is a best available situation?
Right, I guess to clarify my conversation with you is that there are people in my office who are per eligible, oh, I'm sorry. Per eligible, but who are not going to retire. I mean, I don't know whether they're applying or retired, but it's just something to be aware of for succession planning. I will provide the board some analysis, my office, some recommendations up here in the coming weeks about staffing levels. As you know, Chris Gilmore, our senior litigator, will be leaving to Multnomah County here at the end of November, and we lost our 28-year employee, was a paralegal, was a central member of the team, so there's going to be--
You did?
--some transitions. And yes, Onwin is retiring as well, so.
Oh, I had no idea.
Yeah, and that's in February, so there's going to be some big transitions coming. How about?
Oh, there we go, thank you. So big transitions coming, and we are being kind of overwhelmed with litigation right now, and so I'll be making some recommendations for the staffing at the office in the future. But yes, we do have some very talented senior-level employees that have been around for a long time, who know the county inside and out, I believe would be interested in being an interim. And there may be some who will also be interested in replacing me.
So you've heard all that, so I don't know where that leaves us.
Well, why don't we go ahead and go to next slide?
I have a quick question for Alan as well. This is Commissioner Scouton. Alan, I'm just wondering, is there a core? I know in my past life, there were people like that out there. Folks who were recently retired, eminent lawyers in the area of government law practice, who were now looking to maybe do some part-time retirement, sort of semi-retirement work, who were in a position to drop it for a couple of months and then leave, a little bit analogous to what happened with our chief administrative officer. Is there a, is there a core possibly of recently retired or sort of, or lawyers in private practice who could serve on an interim basis, with the understanding that they would do this for a few months on the interim basis?
Commissioner Scouton, that's a great question, and actually, my predecessor, Dan Olson, did that, filled in for interim positions, but he is no longer practicing any law. And right now, I don't know of any emeritus county councils out there who are willing to step in, but one of the big resources that I'm going to recommend that you recruit from is the Association of Oregon Counties, the county councils, lists are of the 36 counties, you know, several hundred attorneys out there who would be, and there may be some that are retired and keep their bar license up, and who'll be interested in stepping in. So also, the League of Oregon Cities is another great recruiting site, and so, and they may have someone who would be familiar. There is some differences between counties and cities, but I think they could, a city attorney could do a good job as well.
So I'll be quite frank here. We'd all just had the opportunity to hear that your team is a bit overwhelmed with litigation moving forward. I do know that you, I asked several times, and you were very good about helping me appreciate that the number of, with the CRF funding, the Coronavirus Relief Fund funding, there was an increased volume of contracts that were in place. And as we look to the new year, we can remain hopeful that there will be additional funding. And so that's an additional demand. I don't know how things stand with regard to public records requests. You have an excellent team. And at the same time, that they're human and living through the same Coronavirus stresses that we all are. And so I just want to make sure there's someone there, just as we talked about with having the interim CAO, a contact for us, but also just a people manager to help your team members be the best that they can be in a continuing crazy time.
That's absolutely true. There has been increased workload with the CRF and the pandemic, and the, all the housing initiatives have really kind of taken a toll on our staff. And employment matters, employment litigation has greatly increased, and so, again, this is some of the issues I will address in my memorandum to you describing the needs of the office I predict in the future. And again, this person who will be coming in, I think, could be helpful and as an interim to hiring Mr. Gilmore's replacement and our paralegal Ms. Wynn's replacement as well. We're having a meeting with HR staff tomorrow, I'm trying to get those out and running, so.
Okay. Any other thoughts, commissioners?
My comments, I've been listening. One, under the job description, under qualifications, if there really isn't an emphasis, I see it's under other skills and abilities and that sort of thing, but really an emphasis on personnel management. This is a department in which somebody has to really have some experience with managing not just lawyers, and you point that out below, but also with administrative folks. I think something that would kind of emphasize that, so people applying, that would be important. And I like the 10-year experience with an emphasis on government law. To me, you can, that's a nice soft way of saying that, but if they don't have government law, it's not, at least my vote would be no. And the reason for it is that you have to have somebody who understands this business, and I think Dick pointed that out well, and I'm hoping, and he's listening, and I'm hoping he's going to be involved in that process. I value his judgment a whole bunch. Secondly, on who should be involved, really premature, and let me tell you why. In any organization, what you do when you have somebody who's living, you immediately say, what's the interim step? You've nicely told us it'd probably be March, I think that's probably a best guess. It could be April. I'd certainly like to see what the action plan is to have an interim there on January, whatever it is.
January 4th.
January 4th. So that kind of then puts some sideboards on who might be involved, because you brought up, you don't want somebody who says, oh, I'll help you out, and by the way, I'm an applicant. So to me, the key is finding an interim right now. I mean, that's the important thing, because we just don't stop and say, well, we'll wait for somebody new coming in. After you find that interim, and this is just my personal bias, is that this candidate or ultimate hirer works for the Board of Commissioners, period. I mean, they're evaluated, hired, but they have involvement with the CAO. So the CAO would always be somebody I think ought to be on that panel, with any and all commissioners who want to be. As far as the other staff outside, I haven't made up my mind, but they don't really have a lot of application to what we're doing. I mean, if this person's loved by somebody else but hated by this board, that's not a good fit. So I'm hoping that, that we'll really do this, who should be involved after we get a business plan from Alan, saying, here's what's going to happen in an assessment, and that can be confidential, I don't know however you want to do it. I would hope that you would give that assessment to our board chair fairly soon, because that's, she disseminates information to us. I think we're flying a little bit blind. I mean, we're only, with Christmas and everything, we're only a few weeks from your departure, and I don't know who's running anything after that.
And Commissioner Rogers, I have been working on that, and I'm assembling some data and talking to my staff and seeing what they think the needs are, and so I'll have that in a couple weeks.
Good. To her.
To her. I was going to send it to the whole board.
But I mean to you first.
Okay.
Okay, certainly.
Okay. I totally agree with you, Commissioner Rogers. The one thing that I really appreciated when we hired our CEIO is that in the finalists' interviews, that the sheriff was included in that, and so he's one stakeholder that I would like us to figure out how to include somewhere in the process. But I think, I feel that having another check-in on the hiring of the position with that information, with the job description, a little bit more reflection time, will help me be able to have a little bit more thoughtful feedback with regard to next steps.
I'd also like to add that, I've thought a lot about this, and we have three hires that the commission makes. We have our chief administrative officer, we have our general counsel, and we have the head of Clean Water Services. This is our opportunity to work closely with our most recent hire, Ms. Angie, about building an effective team. And I strongly feel that she needs to be an integral part of every step of this, because I want to make sure that the legacy we leave as a commission is a group that works well together, that functions at a high level together, and can provide the county with the type of leadership that our county needs. So I want to make sure that Ms. Angie is involved in every step as we move along the way. And Latricia, I feel that you are a very important cog in this as well. The difference is, I see you as providing advice and counsel and making sure that we're on point in relationship to DEI issues. When I look to Ms. Angie, it's, can you work with this person? Can we, can we work as a team together? So that's, those are the big key issues for me.
Yeah, I, this is kind of Commissioner Scouton. I agree with what I just heard from Commissioner Threes, and thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for your compliments. And I'm glad that you talked a little bit about the management side, because there's definitely a very important administrative side. This is not purely a legal practice position, but it's an interesting meld, I think, that I've seen of both the ability to manage other people and to run an office, and also to be well-versed in the area of the law, because it's pretty hard to really make assignments, it's pretty hard to really manage unless you have that kind of pretty deep grounding in the law. On the other hand, the skill sets for law practice and doing good legal analysis and being a manager are also kind of distinct. In this case, we're really someone who can do, who can do both, and skill sets need to be kind of melded together.
Madam Chair, members of the board, one other recommendation I would have is that you include some of the senior members of my office on reviewing those candidates, because they will know the reputation, at least of the local people, they've worked in this community for, you know, sometimes 25 years, and so they'll know their, you know, the reputation and how well they've done in their careers, so.
So what I think we're going to need out of, I'll put it on the project manager and NOVAC's shoulders, and require of you, probably the most clumsy way to put it, but to then use other expertise, to gather information and put together a, your thoughts on who helps screen, right? The first iteration of screening, NOVAC usually goes through and makes sure they meet all the qualifications. But then maybe an additional screening, but I'm also mindful of bias. And then our, having a process, right? We had a multi-step process before where NOVAC, not that I remember it very well, but that there were a bunch of applicants. We had a meeting, we reviewed all of those. Out of those, we had, we made a selection for final interviews. So I think that's the next step we're going to need. And as noted, yes, we do have a roundtable on December 5th, and, you know, we, I'll call a special meeting if whatever-- if whatever time-wise, it's important that we have a process that we all feel good about. And that includes for the interim. So I am, you know, it's interesting, I did remind myself as I was listening to various comments that, you know, having Chris leave to another great position, that's great. I'm wondering, does your team, it will be undersourced then? And does that mean that we need to bring in some additional contract legal staff to help? Because I'm wondering, so does the interim make a hire? Or do we hold, have interim resources, temp resources in, and wait until the full-time person is on board to do that staffing?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we are already contracting with an outside attorney for this, one of our big cases right now that is moving forward, that Sawby versus Washington County. And likely we'll be having to do some other interim contracts for outside counsel on some of our other cases. And those expenses are going to be way heavily into my recommendations by why we need some more in-house people, because it is more cost-effective to have those people in-house than to hire a very expensive outside counsel.
Well, and the other thing that I don't have satisfactory level of visibility in is to how many different committees, I'll call them that, I'll label them that, committees you serve on, whether they're internal or external, on behalf of county business, you know, risk committee and getting all that stuff handled. And I don't want all this responsibility, just crushing responsibility, coming down on the shoulders of your team.
Right. So we have a very good team, very able and capable. They are, you know, I think stressed at this point, but I think they'll be able to handle the transition well.
Chair Harrington, if I can just add to that. Based on my conversations with county council and also our chief human resources officer, we have set aside some funds to help in this transition, whether that is more in-house or outside. So we'll be working collaboratively on bringing options for that assessment forward.
The only other thing I was going to add, and Ellen, I'm going to put you on the spot a bit, and maybe the rest of the board wouldn't agree, and that's fine. You can talk about this with the chair when you have this other memo. I know you're not retiring. I mean, you've told me that. You're going to do some consulting and some other work. So it's not like you're riding into the sunset. What we did for historical perspective when we hired your position is we obviously used Dan a bit in terms of some review of applicants and some commentary. Because first of all, he was unbiased. He didn't care, because he was going out, and it wasn't his job application. And he knew what the perspective of the department was. I'm wondering, and I'm not saying a lot of pro bono, I'm just saying for a fee, when you have your discussion with the chair, you might throw that in the back of your mind, and maybe we could buy a little time for you to help do that screening. Because again, I can't think of anyone who knows the department better, more thoroughly, and would be less biased. And that's my opinion, so.
Well, Commissioner Rogers, that's very generous. I hadn't considered that. But I think I would have a good sense of the candidates, at least the ones that were from Oregon and in the office. And I would be able to, I think, be able to contribute to that. So I'll keep that, if that's something the board wishes me to do, I'd be, keep that option open. So, thank you.
You know, you folks know me. I'm a framework systems person. So I think when there's a bit more of a framework around timeline and whatnot, I'm not, I'll feel more grounded, I guess.
So it sounds to me like, you can tell me if I'm getting this right, as I look to next steps for us, a priority is understanding the role of interim appointment and where that would fall, what needs to happen between now and January 4th to be ready to have an interim on. I think we can do some legwork for you on that and put together some timelines and some options there. I think we can also put together a timeline that coincides with that, that would identify when the job vacancy and posting would be announced, and what that means given vacations, holidays, et cetera. I want to be cautious in promising that we could be back by December 3rd with another job description with six interviews in between now and then. I think that may not be realistic, given the weight of this position. And if that is the case, then the idea of having that job vacancy announced before the winter break may also not be realistic. So I just want to consider that. Certainly, that doesn't mean the chair couldn't call a special meeting to do that. So I just want you to think between today, November 5th, and December 15th or so, as things start to wind down. If you do want to have that job vacancy announced, just, I think that's, that would be one piece of information we would need to go away today with.
So today is November 5th. I've heard that Commissioner Scouton wants to ensure that his being out is flexible. So I agree with you that what I'm hearing is having a next round of the job description doesn't feel attainable for Thursday, December 3rd, not a problem. But I do think we should continue to strive to have the vacancy announced December 15th.
Okay.
If possible.
I think that extra, I just know that between now and the Thanksgiving break, you all have very busy calendars.
Yeah.
So we'd be looking at that, the first two weeks of December to really have those conversations.
Sketch it out and see if we can do December 15th, is what I'm coming to. Yeah, I would just say sketch it out for us, and we'll go from there. Because we all need to be able to have some anchoring on this. But I'll come back to the interim. We do want to make sure that that is a priority for moving forward. So it would be advantageous to declare the vacancy before Alan actually retires, but that isn't a requirement. So I want to, if possible, could we just put a hold on discussion on the interim for a second and come back to the lessons learned from our CAO recruitment? Because there was the CAO interim recruitment as well. So do you want to kick it off, or do you want me to start it off?
Go right ahead.
I was really pleased that NOVAC was able to help us do the CAO interim. I think that experience, I remember we did the interviews of, we at first had three finalists, but then only had two to interview. We did it in the work session room back there. But it felt like it was really the first board project that we had to work on. And in a way, it was a bonding experience that way. I felt that we were very lucky, not just fortunate that NOVAC helped us, but we got very lucky. We had a really great interim, or at least my experience was, we had a really great interim. And that was before we even knew we were going to have a pandemic, right? November, we were sort of going, oh, wow, look at that thing in China. So it was, it was, the interview process, I felt very well-served, and it was very comfortable, even though we had to delay certain parts of it because of the pandemic. Thoughts?
I agree with your thoughts about the interim hire and the way that that was handled. I think that, and through no fault of NOVAC, but it was pretty herky-jerky in the first steps for our hiring of the CAO, but that was strictly related to COVID issues.
And I can't even remember back then.
Yeah, it was, well, we, there was trouble, at that point, we were still thinking about, could people fly in for interviews? There were all sorts of issues that we were grappling with that I think made it a more difficult process. And candidates had, their plans were changing on a day-to-day basis, as all of ours were. So I think we were dealing with a difficult time set. I'm hoping that this process, we've learned now more how to use our Zoom capabilities or whatever technology provides us with a lot more effectively. I think we understand more, and the general population is not as nervous about these types of processes. So my takeaway is that we incorporate the learned experiences with the process changes for this one, and that we try to stay on task in terms of the timeline. The timeline slipped last time, but it was understandable the reasons why. I just want to really focus on staying on task here and not having that two, three, four-month extension, period.
Commissioner Willie, do you have any thoughts? Do you want to?
No, I'm just listening to this. I like the process. I haven't, I haven't decided yet about the, it's going to be important that we have an interim, because I think the process is going to perform better. So yeah, I kind of like the thought process where we're doing this and thoughtfully, what is the first step we should take? We should get a conversation on the interim. I would go about finding that person or talking to Alan, or whatever the options are there. Because that's, as Alan has indicated, there's a lot of work there, and we certainly don't want that. Chris leaving, we don't want that in that office. So yeah, just listening to all of this, I'm thinking that's kind of worrying.
Was there anything about the recruitment, the search and recruitment for the CAO that you felt we did well, or you would like to see us learn from and change?
Well, considering that we started out with six candidates, I think, and five that we were going to interview during the pandemic pause that we all had to endure, and drop down to two, I don't think we're going to experience that this time. Well, it's just, we're more comfortable with that.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
And certainly, you know, as we remember it back then, we would interview in our GR team, we pre-pandemic, we interviewed a couple of people. So I think we're much more comfortable with that process, as are the candidates, we'll be. So no, I think this is going to be a smoother process. But this is a pretty critical position. I mean, I think of it as, quite frankly, as critical as Latrice's position that we filled. These are, it's a very, very important process. I don't want to back practice. And certainly don't want to leave the department in a lurch. So how we balance those two, I don't know.
So Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Threes and Commissioner Scouton, if you have anything else, please jump in.
I'm happy to. And this is going to sound impolite, I'll tell you that upfront, from NOVAC. We don't know each other. You're a new face to me, so that's, that's good. The firm is not. The process was not smooth, for some of the reasons that Mr. Threes said, but other things that, for those of us who go through these processes from time, you know, more frequently than I want to, but it wasn't smooth. And it was, I think it was incumbent upon NOVAC to correct it. And let me tell you what I think, and again, if it's impolite, I apologize upfront, but I think you need to know. One, we had a bunch of folks who apply, only to find that we got fairly cavalier and cut down to this small number. And maybe prematurely, when a bunch of them weren't there at the end. I never did get a clear answer why people were not appearing for the interviews. To me, I understand that times change. I understand the COVID situation. I understand all of that. But there was never a report as to what was going on, and we never were given an opportunity to expand. And in this recruitment, I'm hoping that if you get 30 folks who say that they applied, that we don't cut down to three and find out that they, after they evaluated the position, it wasn't a good fit for them, and so they're gone, and we've cut loose the other 27 in my simple examples. So I'm hoping that, and you don't need to do it with all of us, I mean, we've got a chair, that's really her role. But I would hope you'd communicate with her on a regular basis and say, here's what we've got in applicants, and that you have a clear understanding what the job title is, so that people don't apply just because they think that it might be nice on their resume to say that they got considered, you know, that they're serious about it, and that we do have a nice pool at the end. And that's nothing to say about our CEO. I think she's doing a terrific job, and I appreciate her being on staff. So your result at the end was good. It's just for me, not maybe the rest, but for me, I just thought it could have been a lot cleaner on the consultant's part by communicating what was happening and not just saying, well, I don't know why, but they're all, you know, they're all disappearing. And so you kind of go, wow, that's, that's an odd way. I mean, you know, either they say, I don't, it doesn't fit, or, you know, I like my present position, I'm not going to change. I mean, but does that make sense? I mean, I just, the communication part. And again, for me, I don't need to, if you give it to the chair, that's fine. So I feel that there was some process on your part helping us to fill a position.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts.
I'd like to ask Ms. Angie, Ms. Angie, what your thoughts are about the process as, obviously, the successful participant.
So I want to go back to the point of the process where Catherine Tuck Parish called me. It took her two calls to get ahold of me. And she walked through the job description. And it was the thoughtfulness of the framing of Washington County, what the board was looking for, that I knew you all took time in putting that together. So that, from a candidate standpoint, that's the first good sign. Also, I was not interested in being part of a recruitment, that there was an interim that was a candidate in the process. So that was the other good sign. Because when you are in a position that you're appointed by an elected board, there's a degree of professional risk by having your name out in a process, if the interim is a candidate as well. Relative to the process, it was rough, it was rough times. I'm glad that the virtual interviews were delayed, because the day that Catherine Tuck Parish had called for that initial interview was the day we were opening our EOC, and I said, I can't. It was too much. So Commissioner Rogers, to your point, herky-jerky, it felt like that from a candidate standpoint, too, because we were also in COVID times. I think we've all learned how to live and work with masks even better, so it feels less awkward. What I would express is, I do think, from a candidate standpoint, the interview with the department directors, that all the directors were in the room, it just felt very impersonal. So I think opportunities to, for the interview process, that we can have some smaller group settings, is just a much better candidate experience. I will say, I know Heather well. Heather became the primary recruiter for the city of Boulder. And there's one, one thing that I'll say about Heather, is she not only works for the elected, she also is working for, from a candidate experience, because part of this is ensuring a match. So I just, Heather knows I sing her praises. Also, during my tenure at Boulder, we had placed some first positions in the organization, really hard to reach, or limited pool of candidate positions. And one of Heather's strengths is how she sources, and she is extremely tenacious, which I think is a great quality of a recruiter. And she has a very wide network within the profession, in multiple professions. So knows how to work that network to get So knows how to work that network to get candidates to apply to. So I wanted to add that just on the recruiting standpoint.
Thank you. There's another piece that I'd like, that I'd like to add. And that is through the experience with the hire that we attempted in human resources and through your hire, I'm, I'm comfortable with the Zoom approach up to a point. But I think it's really important that we get people in as soon as we can because we learned, we, we learned a great deal in the H R piece. We also frankly, my ability to relate to Tanya just doubled when she was in the room. So that's, I think that it's so important to have that piece. We can go through all the steps upfront, but I, I want to make sure we get to the, the in-person as soon as we possibly can while respecting pandemic issues and everything else.
Can I add something just from a candidate experience? For initial screening interview with the board, I would suggest maybe all the board members are on Zoom. It was really from a candidate standpoint, the view of this room, I couldn't see any of you. I could just see the heads. And so it was, it was hard from my standpoint because I knew you were seeing me, but I couldn't really make out any of you.
So I've been complaining about that to our interim C A O and our C A O for repeatedly.
I T S is working on options that, with the goal that we will have it in by the end of the year so that we can use C R F funding because we assume we will be in this meeting space for the next 18 to 24 months.
Madam Chair, if I just make one additional comment to address Commissioner Rogers' concerns. I think this will go a little more smoother because you're focusing on the Oregon State Bar membership. So you'll have, I think we'll have a pretty good local pool. Washington County has a great reputation throughout the state as a, you know, a well-funded, well-organized, well-run organization. And also I think my attorneys in my office are well-known. They, they take leadership roles throughout the state. So I think people would be happy to come and work with them, so.
And that's a cultural thing that I want to continue in. I don't know yet. I need you folks to figure out how to capture that, right? So that it continues on. There are a lot of wonderful aspects to Allen's shop that I don't want to lose, right?
On the same hand, I think we also want to respect what our cultural viewpoint might be on the opposite end of the spectrum in terms of our diversity issues and those types of things. And with all due respect, I just want to make sure that we are aware of all the dynamics.
So.
So could I pose two questions?
Could I just make one last comment? So I think I want to be really clear here about, I'm, I'm thinking goals, okay? I would like for us to have a goal of getting the interim process going and getting flesh on the bones there and clarity on that in December. If possible, I would like us to be able to close on the job description before December 18th as well. For me, declaring the vacancy is, is the third thing. But that, the other two are, are really the primary to go from there. I'm hoping, well, I would prefer that we have an interim all set for January 4th. I think it would be really, I think we do need to strive to have some process clarity for both of those pieces, but particularly process clarity, timeline clarity for the permanent position before close of business in December as well. Oh, and the last thing I want to mention. I appreciate Commissioner Rogers' vote of confidence in me for helping to serve as a point person on this. But you absolutely know that I am committed to the fact that this is our hiring decision. So if along the way there's anything that doesn't reflect that, please do let me know because I endeavor for that and don't mean to do anything different. But it's one of those things, I don't know what I don't know. Commissioner Rogers, we've been, Commissioner Scouton, we've been able to look at one another here in the room to see if, if body language says someone wants to jump in. Is there anything else you'd like to add for the discussion at this point? Whoops, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you for asking. I think we've covered it pretty well. I don't have any additional comments. This has been a very good discussion. Thank you.
Great. Now Elizabeth.
Well, to mind meld with Chair Harrington, to your two goals, I have two questions. The first is what can we prepare for you in advance of your one-on-ones with NOVAC to have that conversation about job description? We will of course have this. I can do some more legwork to get additional ones from other county councils around the state. Is there other information that would be helpful for us to get to you in advance of that meeting or at that meeting?
For me, I have enough for now. How about the rest of you?
For me, I'd like to hear Allen's point.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
That's going to be very helpful for you to get a good insight.
Sort of what's on the plate now. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Allen, do you remember when that, I know you and I have a one-on-one with that, but I don't remember when it is. Next, next week. Next week?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks, Al.
And I've scheduled, I think, a total of three hours in two one and a half hour blocks in case you need a second.
Okay, great.
All righty.
And then the second question is what analysis or information do you need from us as a team to help you make a decision about internal versus external recruitment for the interim? Because I feel like those are potentially different paths or whether it's with Eva and whether it's an interim versus the other aspect that you talked about.
I think what, I'm reacting right away, sorry, and jumping in. I need to put the word analysis off to the side a little bit. I don't know, I don't expect the interim to be able to handle everything that is in the permanent job description, right? But I do think we need to be prepared for an interim for six months, which is what we did with the C A O one. But I think the information that Allen's, it, do you think you'll be able to have that? Well, I'm just going to say, I'll just put a marker down that we have a goal of making sure that the commission has the information from Allen by December 3rd.
Madam Chair, I certainly will have that. I'll have a draft ready for next week. And I know you would have another roundtable coming up.
December 3rd.
December 3rd, right. So if you want to have a discussion then, I'll certainly be available.
I'd like to know if we can, what the process might be to ask Allen's staff as well, what they need from an interim in terms of being able to manage for up to six months. So, and I, I don't know if it's all the staff, but I, but certainly lead people. And I'd also like Ms. Angie interviewed as well about, from her perspective, what needs to happen there. And perhaps even the sheriff.
Yeah, I'm really, I.
Six months is a long time.
I want to make sure that the processes that they rely upon will continue, right? That an interim will be able to do that. And I, I say that not knowing. Maybe Allen's thesis will, will answer all those questions for me. Okay, great. So we'll plan to, I think we should plan that for the December 3rd roundtable, we spend some more time on this as well.
Thank you. I appreciate this conversation. I appreciate hearing from my fellow commissioners. And I'm not worried about the professional approach to this. I'm worried about the length of time that this will take to, for us to get through it. That's my concern frankly.
I think it's also important to always remember that in the timeline, you may have a candidate that may need a month to plus to get here and be started. That's always a factor that's unknown, but it's something to consider.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the reminder.
And Elizabeth, if you could help subsequent to this meeting today, but amongst you, I'm particularly, I need the reminder of how many A Rs I just gave myself.
I'll go ahead and do a post-meeting wrap-up of notes, make sure that we all agree on it. And I'll add in some of that tentative timeline we talked about.
Thank you.
And I'll assign a lot to you.
Tuesday. Tuesday. Yeah, guess what? I, I'm in trouble because I don't remember what they were. I hopefully wrote them on my list. Oh, yeah, yes, yes. Yes.
Lending your car and mowing your lawn.
That was my assignment to you.
Well, I already did that.
For the record, I have no A Rs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, team. Thank you. All righty, that was a great discussion. Thank you, everyone. All righty, so we'll move on now to 2021 Board Initiative Review and then onward with Draft 2021 Initiative. So, but before I get to that, before all of that in the packet, I was very intentional in putting together the packet for this roundtable so that you have information about, you know, what we've done together and how we might proceed over the next few months. So the first document that is in the packet is, I call it Catherine's Current Plan with regard to roundtables. So this is, this can all flex and it should all flex. So I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to share any and all comments, feedback, what have you. I wrote a note for myself that it may be advantageous for us to have a roundtable conversation about Reimagine Oregon and our own Washington County desires, our own board desires around that. And I, I just thought it might be more efficient for us to have a conversation in a roundtable format as opposed to anything else. But that's just an idea, right? So, but without further ado, the next thing I did was I started by looking at this year. It's been an amazing year. And I thought, well, I want us to make sure that we understand that we've done more than just indoor COVID. So that's why I put this 2020 Board Initiatives in, in review. And I didn't want to be bound by some document table. So you all have the, the next document. And I, I thought it, just to demonstrate, there were many areas where we were very nimble. And so I used the italics as a font for that. So, you know, COVID, first and foremost, wow, but you've done an amazing job with that response. We had a very successful interim C A O experience, I thought. You know, the major legislation that we adopted right in January and February, levy referrals, equity resolution, then our pandemic response, the budget, department-level staffing. You know, our interim C A O helped us with all of that. There was the C A O hiring, the county levies, there was defining the referrals, then actually doing the referrals. Our D E I work with the, the resolution and the hiring there. Census, wow, you know, that was something we had built up towards for the April 1st kickoff and making sure there was visibility. Luckily, thankfully, all of that work that Philip had done as our point person was leveraged. And that process was elongated but then truncated. And I think that September 30th was the final date. That will bring us back to a board initiative item for next year, and that is redistricting. There was the state legislative work. We knew. Yeah, yeah.
Do we have, is there a timeframe that we have to fall into or is that?
There are requirements in our charter and when we get to the 2021 stuff, but Allen will be here to help us with that too. With the state legislature, we had planned on the short session and then there were multiple special sessions. And I think we were very well-served by the, the then-new G R team. And I think they have a setup well for this next long session too. I think on the, the roundtable plan, I put a section in there for us to checkpoint on election stuff so that we can make sure that going into the new year, we, yes, election recap update. So that we're mindful of what the state legislature might look like or is going to look like, at least from a person's standpoint, in 2021. I figured December would be a good date because it'll be after the election results for Washington County and the state are certified. So if there's anything weird, we don't, we don't have to be on that roller coaster. Federal legislation, the big thing that was added was the CARES Act and all the different pieces there. There was more than just the C R F funding, right? There was the E S G funding as well. So community development and health and human services each had additional funds from the federal government. So this is where Allen, I'm hoping, or what I'd like, Tanya, if you could, Tanya, if you could help with this. As part of our next C R F update in December and then what I view as the final report, I'd like to know how many contracts? There were contracts through new organizations, but then there were new contracts, but with existing partners? I'd like to get some feedback on that, see that documented. Because that was great follow-up work.
We certainly can do that.
We were able to do that with confidence because of the teams that we have, both in legal, procurement, and in the departments.
Along that same line, I've been.
Thank you for.
Excuse me for.
Coming in. No, really, this is what a roundtable is supposed to be conversational.
You know, one of the things I'd like to know, the, the COVID response and C R F funding piece together, it, it would be interesting to have an idea of what the diversion of our human resource time has been. I know that we're talking about legal, but when you look at the E O C, when you look at the, our, our business recovery folks, we've got Eric Doyle working in there, Chris Defaba working in there. There's been a whole lot of shifting of responsibilities and added time spent by our staff and others in relationship to responding to this pandemic.
I'm really glad you raised this because it reminds me of, of a thought that I've had that we've tried to get back to normal business, right? We see that in our agendas. But if we have team members that are still responding to the pandemic, how do we have visibility, Ms. Angie, into what your organization is staffed to do? And do we consciously have to accept that, well, gee, maybe, I'll just pick an example. Maybe the L U T work plan can't include certain things. Or, you know, there, there might be other examples. We just have to accept that because of the continuing pandemic response or because of the economic recovery and the, the resources that we have or being given to do that, that we are better served to really focus on that recover, economic recovery versus more policy.
So there's, there's two reasons I'd like, I'd like to know about this. One, what in relationship to a future situation that, that may occur where, where we have to have E O Cs in a response that isn't related to the pandemic. The other is the recognition of our staff members who have been. The other is the recognition of our staff members who have been working long hours and trying to do, if you will, two jobs at once. I think about the work that's been going on in HHS, you know, just the tremendous amount of effort that's put into so many different pieces in Marty's shop. And how are we recognizing those employees as, frankly, as a board and showing our gratitude there?
So just.
Chair, can I react to that? So we can definitely do a look back. And I think all the departments have their own story that we can weave together. That information is going to be important as we look forward to next year, too, to choices we may have to make. And it was alluded to slowing down on some initiatives because we're still in COVID response. So I'm a huge proponent of looking back so we can look forward. We'll just have to compile that information for the board, but that's completely doable by December.
Great, thank you.
So just to help us to set the stage for moving forward, supportive housing services, we had the tri-county assessment the end of last year. The here-together stuff really ramped up from October onward. Then there was a proposal that had meat to it in December. And we responded very quickly as an organization, inserted ourselves appropriately into the definitional process. But all of that was new. We didn't have that on, we had a question mark on it with our board initiatives, but we've done a lot there. Get Moving 2020, where Commissioner Tree served as the co-chair, that was defined with Washington County involvement. Thank you. We now have the election results where it failed, and we need to work with our regional partners on what's next. And I've got some other stuff on the 2021 to bring up on that. Charter changes, we defined that, did the referral, that succeeded. So now we have work to do on our 2021. And community engagement, this is where, boy, our plan had to change, right? We talked about having district town halls in each of the four districts and the state of the county. We were nimble here. We had an online COVID town hall in May. Then body-worn cameras in August and our community investment conversations that start up next week. And then the other big project, the county council hiring. And then on the second page, I just brought a couple of other things that were more board attention. But then you saw, I started to wane a little bit.
Exhausted.
Well, I wanted to make sure you all knew that, wow, it's been a very busy year. You accomplished a lot, and I hope you're very proud of you yourselves. I'm very proud of the opportunity of working with you, so.
I'd like to add to that just one bit, and that is that no matter what on this list I was involved with, I always felt like we were all involved. I didn't feel left out of anything, and I also, I felt very comfortable reaching out to other, to our entire commission for help when needed. So we may not have always agreed on issues, but I'm confident that we have had a robust process in looking at our issues and discussing them openly together. So I'm appreciative of that.
Commissioner Scouton, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, not really. It has been a really, really busy year. Certainly, my last year certainly is not going quietly into the night. It's been just a glide path to retirement. We've just been very, very busy. Mostly, I see successes and, yeah, so that's all I really have to add. I think that Commissioner Tree's covered some of the points I wanted to cover pretty well, so thank you for that.
Great. Anything you wanted to add?
Are we gonna, there's a couple of specific things like our ordinance that passed. The charter changes, we're talking about ordinances and we're talking about full-time position for the commission. It said we were going to, or establish a salary committee. How does, how does all that come about and what's the time? I mean, that's, that's a January 1 implementation date, so how are we gonna meet that?
Yep. So this is where I use the roundtable plan. What I thought is that Alan and I would sync up on that and come in with just a first thought and go over that at the, in the December, I might have said January, at the December roundtable so that we can all agree on the mechanics of it and the messaging around it and then go from there. It just felt like a bit too much to wait all of this for today.
I did ask. I did ask Alex to do a little bit of research on what's happened locally in relationship to salary review committees. And I have, he did just a two-pager about what's happened locally, so we've got that information as well. But it's not, you know, it's more information that he just completed, I think yesterday, actually, that now gives us some, at least some footprint as to what other groups have done.
So I also wanted to recognize that, wow, we've had a heck of a year. And I'm really glad that you have your vacations set up. I've got mine. Commissioner Scouton has his, Commissioner Tree's with her, Commissioner Rogers. I hope you'll be able to take a little bit of a break from county business.
None this year.
At least, well, yeah, I know. We own our own destiny, but you have the opportunity of having a non-commission busy week, the week of Thanksgiving. So, and one of the goals that I have for 2021 is that we're all able to go and take board vacations without pandemics canceling all of them. So we'll see how that goes. So, any further thoughts on this year before we transition to the next document? So what I'm now using is the roundtable sheet, handy, while looking at the draft that at the top says KH's End-of-Year Assessment Proposal and First Draft Proposal for next two years. But what you will see is it has a year for 2020, another one for 2021, and then out for 2022. So is everybody with me, you know what document I'm looking at? Okay, great. So you will see information in 2020 here as well. I added a new row, external crises, right? So 2020, we had the COVID-19 response. But then projecting out into 2021, I put, okay, public health. We have a public health crisis. We need to continue to remain flexible and nimble with COVID-19 and the seasonal flu. Then there's hopefully Phase 2 reopening. A goal of in-classroom learning. We, I think, are going to have to play a role with regard to when there's a vaccine, ensuring that it's available in our community and deployed countywide. We don't control that, but I think we should anticipate that there will be a role there. May cause us in a later quarter to pause some things because of that, right? So I see this as a framework or a structure for us to be nimble and flexible.
Do you want to include in that row wildfires?
Oh, certainly under 2020, you betcha. And then you also see economic recovery continuing to support that, and that goes out into 2022 as well. Next row, election. District 3, thank you Commissioner Rogers for winning. District 1, we now have clarity on who that new commissioner is. And we have the onboarding in 2021. And then out into 2022, we have three positions back on the ballot. And you'll see later information on levies. We had tried to be intentional about our role in terms of hiring. So you'll see checkmarks on the CAO hiring for six-month transition. We're still underway with that. I'm going to bring in a timeline tool. It felt like a little much for today. But we owe, Tanya, Ms. Angie, a six-month review. So we have some work to do in 2021 on that. We also owe Diane her review in January. So that's another thing that I've got to get going here in November. So as I was hearing you talk about, well, maybe the chair, maybe the chair, I'm going, holy smokes, my shoulders are.
Is that supported by HR? Is that process, are those review processes supported by HR?
Yes, but we own the content and all that jazz, so.
I just wanted to.
Yep, but, yep, they're definitely there. So just documenting, right? And so I've got the standard business year timeline that I'll be bringing in for the next roundtable. I might, I'll probably send it out before, not just with the packet, but hopefully I've got, I'll have it settled in a week or so. And then Elizabeth took a look at it, and while I formatted it for me, a different format may work for others. So I flipped over to the other side. What we have new now is the county council search and hiring. So just recognizing different steps there, documenting the CWS CEO annual review. Then I took a slightly different approach. I added in a row for major county planning. We've been talking about a strategic plan, so I put a question mark in that. We talked about in 2021 having a work plan defined. And then I wanted to recognize that this will likely be a multi-year approach, could have different phases. So I merely populated it as such. That's all. It's just a starting point. It will change. Major policy work, well, I think we should have a board conversation about that sometime. Then I added in that row, too, one called Major Policy Responsiveness, right? We function in a larger ecosystem. So here, redefining public safety journey, and then state climate adaptation framework. Oh, I meant to put down on the 2020 accomplishments list, Commissioner Scouton, the board being responsive on the climate, excuse me, the state conservation habitat plan. I think that's another good accomplishment.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for that. I'm just making a note for myself. Feel free to jump in, folks. I don't mean to hog the whole mic. Then the next row, county council levies and financial planning. So there are some things that shifted from 2020 into 2021, specifically the facilities master plan review. We do know that in 2022, the ESPD levy is, it's time for re-up. We don't know what kind of referral that will be. It'll be 10 years since the last replacement. So that's why I put in assess for 2022 referral. I think we want to make sure that we have more proactive information with that. So then we'll know we have the referral and then successful passage, I'm going for the presumptive close in 2022. We have a fair, complex master plan, but what we don't have is a facilities master plan, financial plan. Then there's the courthouse. We've talked about needing a new courthouse. We've got to get organized on that through the state legislature. So some of that work will go into 2022 as well. Should I keep going?
I'm getting tired. Yes, please keep going.
Yeah, I know. Then there's the DEI work. Some of this, these are, this is just recognizing, like, the big strategic things. Some of this work will happen through the rolling agenda. So it's not added work, it's just recognizing that there is some big, there's big decision-making here, and I don't want you to be surprised that it's going to be on the calendar. So I'll jump down to consensus 2020. So we did the championing. Now we're going to be getting the data. What I don't know is if the data is still going to be on track from the federal government for March. So in our charter, it talks about the process, and we have, I think it was in the charter, a process for the redistricting. And so I just wanted to put a marker in there that that's work that we're required to do. The board went through changes when it was you and Greg and whatnot. So now the margins are much lower than it used to be. It's now 103%. So.
When's the last time you did that, Roy?
About four different times. One of the things, and Dick, he can attest to this because he was there, that we did is, and this board certainly didn't have to do it, but we just looked at the population, took and said, what do we have to have per district? And had LUT give us three or four scenarios with boundary changes, and we could adopt that. But we didn't gerrymander at all. We looked at everything going down a road, a major road. And we just said, what difference does it move from one area to the other? And I know, Dick, you and I have had more than one talk about that, that no one could ever, everyone, no one could ever charge us with trying to micromanage our districts. We just said, okay, if I needed to get rid of 5,000, or you did, we just moved them around and just went to another road. So I.
Well, state ORS requires that you have very clear factors.
Right.
And so.
But we could, you know, how some people do, they've taken, they say, well, I don't like that area, so why don't I take this area? We never did that. We just basically.
No, because then you'd be subject to lawsuits, so.
And we didn't want to get into that.
Well, I was just trying to envision what our county population was the last time we did the redistricting.
It was 10 years ago. It was probably about five-something.
Well, but the county went through, they hired Walt Peck. It wasn't just through the decennial stuff, but we do need to make sure we follow up. So that's going to be a project for county council to help us with as well. And we are required to do that, so it's not optional between our CAO's help and county council's help to take us through the work. But just as a board, mechanically, you get the information, you assess, okay, well, so where do we have problems? And you make sure you define a process, and then you go through the process. We don't have to have some big advisory committee or anything like that. We just have to be very mindful of it and set it out.
But I think what I'm most interested in is where the pockets of growth are in our county right now. I mean, I can envision, like, South Hillsboro, but it isn't developed. It's, that'll be the next generation 10 years from now of.
My area's had huge growth.
Yeah, well, and Bethany area for Pam.
Well, and that's why this is done every 10 years.
It's going to be interesting to see where that, the largest growth is, and so.
It's really helpful to have the census information come in and have the team map it for us.
Yeah.
Dick?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I do agree with Commissioner Rogers. Sort of pat myself in his back. I think we did a good job the last go-around. I think that was very, very collegial, I think very positive. We were very mindful of communities of interest and all the appropriate legal standards, but I think beyond that, I think. But I think beyond that, I think we, I think we're very professional in how we did that. And I was very pleased a few years ago, too, that we had the charter amendment changed to really tighten up the differential between the districts. So that we kind of entered the twenty first century, you know, that we have a much tighter standard so that the districts truly are the same size and, and the standards are tighter. So that's all, that's all been great. I would anticipate that District One will continue to grow a little bit. It's by far the smallest of the districts because it's always been the one that was entirely inside the U T B or with urban reserves. This is a small piece, but, so I would anticipate that the growth is going to be elsewhere and the district will grow a little bit. But I'm sure that the, the, the next board in twenty twenty one will do a good job with that. Certainly an obvious place to look that we looked last time that may be added to District One is that so-called football, the area between Shoals and, and, running a blank here. But, no, I'm, I'm talking about the football area.
Barrows and Shoals.
Barrows, thank you. I'm just kind of having a, a, a mental block about that. There's actually a lot of people that live in that area. We had looked at adding that to District One last time and didn't, but, you know, that might be a consideration. But I'm sure that you all do a good job with that as we did in the past.
So then we have the rows for state legislature and federal legislation. So the one thing that I wanted to make sure to capture is dealing with the post CARES Act slash C R F cliff and hope for additional federal support. So I should probably phrase that a little bit differently, proactively ensure. Then the next row, major program engagement. In twenty twenty, we had the Get Moving, transportation funding, regional participation. Very well done. The election result and next steps, we're still working to get clarity. Commissioner Peterson did issue a statement. I think we'll have more conversation about it all in December. I know one thing I'm very concerned about and mindful of is that the Stop Metro Wage Tax Campaign really did a, set a bunch of things that to try and undermine the definitions, the proposal pieces. And as one elected official, I'm not willing to put the burden on local government and government resources to spend government resources to undo that damage. I don't know if that campaign is mindful of the damage that they caused, but I don't think it will be a good use of funding, funding. I don't think we should assume it.
Along, along the transportation line, and Roy, I'd ask for your input here as well. There's going to be a lot of changes with the changes that we've seen in this last election at J P A C and other places. So I think we need to be mindful about making sure our representation is strong for the, for the entire county.
Yep, so we're going to do, that's another thing, under election recap and update for our December roundtable. And also taking a first look at committee assignments in December, having convo one of two, and then coming back to that in the, I've penciled it in for the January seventh roundtable convo two is two.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is where the, the tools work together, right? And no, I'm not going down into the detail of the rolling agenda, but that tool is how staff helps us get work done, too, not just their department work, but us get our work. Another thing under major program engagement, MISTIP three F, program formation. So that is something that staff may have some information to bring for us towards the middle of the year. So I think that would probably be a good place to put that. Then community engagement, we have goals around that. Then we move from board attention, board ownership over to board attention. So generally, under L U T is the work plan proposal and adoption. We're still going to need to use that tool, I assume, Ms. Angie, into the next year because it helps with resource balancing. There was an ordinance that was put on hold to twenty twenty one, ordinance eight sixty five. I can't remember the particulars about why, but that was consciously done. And then this is another place where under board attention for MISTIP three F, following through on that to whatever degree in second half of the year. Then there, also under attention, affordable housing, permanent supportive housing. I didn't, I haven't populated anything under economic development yet. I don't know. And then on the next page, just a bunch of miscellaneous budget adjustments to the adopted budget, given state revenue adjustments and local revenue decline, proposed budget direction for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Going through that with the C A O. And then continuing on, the Washington County Charter Salary Review Commission, appointments, input and next steps, retirement succession planning, Washington County Fair. If it's able to happen in twenty twenty one, it could finally be the first time ever ten day fair. And I know we'll want to have some visibility there.
I think if I could comment to that, the conversations that we've had at the Fair Board with Leah is that if there is a fair, it probably will not be a ten day fair. It may be even abbreviated to the previous fair. So it's going to depend a lot on what we have available to do to us. But I would say the ten day fair is probably not going to happen.
Do you think it might happen in twenty twenty two?
That's what we're looking at. If we look out a couple of years, we're saying it's possible for twenty twenty two. You know, it's, it's kind of depressing, quite frankly, to think that we may still be significantly in this pandemic that would impact our ability to have something like a county fair because there's a lot of other events out there that are going to be restricted as well. And so we'd kind of like to lose the shackles of this pandemic as soon as possible. But facing the reality, we still may be there.
I think it's so smart to, to, to look at ramping up to what we, what our, what our previous expectations were and not, not trying to push it too far out. Because it's not just the impact of the pandemic when the event is scheduled. It's really, it's really trying to get ourselves refigured into the events that, the way we used to have them, and then think about expanding for the future. So I, I think that that's a really smart approach, you know, for, for many businesses, many enterprises to, to scale back a little in the beginning. It ensures more success.
I, I just think in twenty one, there's going to be a lot of movement in a variety of places. If we look to metro events, you know, and certainly their convention center and, and other, just other venues. I think twenty one is going to be a transitional year, and we're going to all be needing to rethink what used to be the norm. And I notice you've got something like the new normal on your agenda here. And I think that, that would be an interesting conversation then, too, so.
So one of the airs that I have from Tuesday is to forward the travel Portland proposal for meetings. They're planning that at best twenty twenty two will be a year of getting the small meet, dealing with the, accommodating the small meeting forums and not having conventions at their same level until twenty twenty three.
I'd like to think our event center is perfectly designed to facilitate exactly that kind of focus, not the big ones, but certainly.
Well, so which is why I put the next bullet there, event center open for business for ends phase two COVID, to whatever degree it's able to.
So Chair Harrington and board, on December eighth, we have tentatively scheduled an update from, from Leah to talk through financial projections, looking out actually to twenty twenty three. The team is looking at really creative options of use of wingspan. We've learned a lot just by having the courts there. So thinking about the asset that we have in wingspan, we have a commercial kitchen that's sitting empty. So what could be some other options to help support the community? And I've asked them to really think about how the wingspan could be looked, used as an economic recovery tool as well. So what many communities are doing is leasing out their commercial kitchens to business startups. So we're starting to have a conversation.
We'll have that conversation. Yep, that's great. So the other thing I need to add here in the board attention under miscellaneous is this W C V A president, or C E O president hiring. That needs to be done by the end of June, so. And then that brings board awareness. And I don't really feel like articulating anymore. I feel like I'm talking a lot. But I did, I, I just wanted to help ensure we had somewhat of a frame, framework for moving forward. So this is just a starting point.
This is just what we know.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and I did project a little bit here, you know, but you could say, no, we don't want that in our face. Delete that line item, right? This is our tool.
Could I ask a question here? Commissioner Willie brought up the question about the salary review commissions and appointments, and it's listed here under board attention. But is there, and I'm not sure if that's in relationship to the budget or, or as a whole.
So the salary review commission, we, we get to do the appointments, but then they do their work. They define what is going to be, and we can and should provide them input information. But it's not like we adopt what they recommend. It's not advisory to us. It is.
They are a commission in and of itself. I, I, right, so.
I'm not sure what your question is.
My, my question really is, where do we see reflected the appointment?
Well, at the moment, right there.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's.
In the roundtable, we'll come back to it in December.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that that's where, that's why I was, the question. Is that, does that encompass everything right there?
If you have a recommendation for something more you need, I'm all ears.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I do appreciate this framework. This is, it's comprehensive, it's, it's daunting. But, but it's, 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 it's really a good framework and helps me think about where, where I am going to request that I can put my energies to the commission. So I, I appreciate that. I think I would like to spend a little bit of time, if we have the bandwidth, on the board awareness piece because it looked to me like that was, a lot of that might be in Tanya's shop. Am I right about that?
So going to the definition, board awareness, for which commission will need to invest some occasional time or occasional action. This is not a replacement for the rolling agenda, nor is it intended to be a duplicate. But for example, the affordable housing program, we're going to have our first ever annual report. I requested that, no, we don't have that on the consent agenda. This is a huge new program. We need to be telling a story there, so I ask that it be done as a full presentation. But we have to demonstrate, right? That's going to be up in the next five to seven years. We have to demonstrate that we've made good on the commitment to the voters. So there's recognizing that second year annual review and that there will be project construction groundbreaking and opening opportunities for all of us. And then over in twenty twenty two, we already know from L U T that there is required code language update. Then under senior staffing, just trying to recognize where we may have some involvement. But this is our tool, so I put it together and, and providing it to you. And then from that, we can ask our C A O for input. But no, I've not yet taken on the task of asking the C A O to populate.
And, and I just wanted to review, review these. And I, I think this is, it also respects, by board awareness, it respects our boundaries as well. And I appreciate that. So it's, it's, everyone's placeful.
Okay, yeah. So wait till you see the timeline next month. That makes me want to run from twenty twenty one. Any other thoughts? Any thoughts about things that are missing? I'm not, I, I'm, I'm not looking forward to taking anything else on.
Well, as far as anything missing, I'll be missing, but good luck and have fun in twenty twenty one.
You'll be showing us how it's done, sir. You will be showing us how it's done. Okay, so back to our roundtable agenda. I don't know about you, but I could use a lunch break. And I thought some talk time about, gee, what this new normal? We've, we've been acting a little bit in the last month, especially through a new normal. We should probably sync up on that. How's it going? And what does that tell us about our capabilities moving forward? I know for one, for example, for me, I don't want to have any more of those marathon sessions like we've had for a couple of Tuesdays. And then onboarding a new colleague, just starting that conversation as well, so. But I know I need a break.
Yeah, I look forward to the, I look forward to both discussions, but certainly on the boarding of new colleague. I've had some brief phone conversations with Commissioner-elect Nafisa Phi, and I told her I really look forward to helping her with the transition and, you know, working closely with her in the coming month and a half, so.
That's nice of you, Dick. That's great.
So do you want to reconvene at one o'clock or at one fifteen?
What's our afternoon and timeline going to look like? Any idea?
I, I can't imagine we're going to need more than an hour or two at the max.
And I, one o'clock's fine with me.
I don't have any written information for this, so it's going to be very conversational, so.
My final departing.
One o'clock is fine.
Yeah, one o'clock's fine. My final departing comment on the whole thing. I always love the, and I'm not going to get it right, the quote from Tyson, who was a great fighter, who always said, we had these wonderful plans, and they, they were really well thought out until the first punch is thrown. And then everything changes. And so we don't know that, we're not going to have another person leave at a critical point. We don't know that pandemic, I, my fear is pandemic is going to be with us well into next year. And so who knows? And so I guess maybe.
And it will be.
Yeah.
But this way, we have some stuff written down so we can say, you know, we're going to consciously delay that, or we're going to consciously pivot this way instead.
It's a bit, a little bit like what we do when we do estate planning, what Jerry would know about. Nobody likes to talk about dying, but you have to talk about it and what's all going to happen. And this is, we've got to talk about all this, but let's see. We're trying to push off what we can.
Gives you a bit of a peace of mind.
It is.
Are we going to go over the clean water services? One, two? Can you do that after lunch?
Yes, let's do that after lunch. That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that okay?
There's a reason for Diane here somewhere, other than she just likes to hang out with us.
And if we could hang in there for just a couple more minutes and ask Alan, Tanya, and Diane, I forgot to ask you earlier if you had anything else you wanted to add. Or did we do that A O K? Okay.
How are you feeling, Alan? Alan, how are you feeling?
I'm sore.
Uh, sore. I may not participate through Zoom for the afternoon.
Don't blame me.
Okey-doke. So back at 1:00 or 1:15?
1:00 is fine with me.
Okay, 1:00 it is.
1:00.
Thank you, Dick.
Yep, thank you.